On Facebook, we're now live streaming on Facebook, everyone. And there is, the audience gallery does have several applicants and at least one member of the public.
Okay. Did you say we're still waiting on any members? I can see Sean, Matt, and myself.
Johnny Wilson is here, Alana is not present, and Albert is not present yet.
Okay.
Doctor Orgain here, I don't see him.
Oh, and Doctor Orgain, yes.
Well, we don't need a quorum, but we have a quorum anyway, don't we?
Yes, you do.
Well, we'll go ahead and get started. Do I need to read the message from the governor considering it's not actually a voting meeting? Alright.
Yes, please. I believe Letitia would definitely have my head if we didn't at least read the statement.
Considering that it's not a voting meeting, do we need to hold a vote in order to hold the meeting remotely?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 16, Number 34, and Number 54, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, members of the Planning Commission will participate by electronic means, and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members and citizens of Galton. We will hold a roll call and let that roll call serve both as a roll call and a vote in favor of holding the meeting electronically. So when your name is called, please answer by saying "present" and "approve." Mary Ann, if you'll please call the roll.
Chair Perrier.
Present and approve.
Mr. Harris.
Present and approve.
Mr. Wilson.
Present and approve.
Councilman Fennell.
Present and approve.
Doctor Orgain. Mr. Stroudor. Ms. Hibbler, you have a quorum.
Very good, thank you. And just to remind that the public comment is not authorized at work session unless the rules are waived by the Planning Commission. But I do want the public to understand that this is just a work-study session for us to familiarize ourselves with the materials that will be coming back to us in a couple of weeks. There will be an opportunity for public comment at that time. So we'll go ahead and move to the first item. If you'll put that up on the screen. Items 1 and 2, Bledsoe Springs Annexation and Plan of Service, rezoning with Preliminary Master Development Plan. Jillian, you're handling that one?
I am. This was an item that was deferred at last month's Planning Commission meeting. So we did receive a new version of the plan for you to take a look at this evening. As you recall, this property is off of Hartsfield Pike adjacent to the industrial center. Next slide. Next slide, please. So as you can see, there were a couple changes made to this plan. The applicants can speak to this more. I did see the applicant on this meeting. So two of the townhomes that were, or two of the sets of townhomes that were directly adjacent to the railroad track up north of the stream were moved south of the stream. That was the main difference that I saw. I did not see any change in density, and there are still units north of the stream. So that would prompt probably some discussion for this evening. Again, it does have the two entrances and exits off of Hartsfield Pike and does connect into the Sunny Mees subdivision to the east. I believe the applicant is here to further discuss this item and any other changes that they may staff to just receive this last week. Thank you.
Andy Leach, your line's been unmuted.
Yes, this is Andy with Greenland Design representing the project here. And last meeting, I was out of pockets. I appreciate the patience as we went through technical difficulties with this. So as you see the project here, there were not a lot of changes. Basically trying to accommodate the EDA's concerns about being close to the Western Reflections Building and relocating those units that Mr. Fenton specifically pointed out. I do know that the Planning Commission had brought up density. And when we originally brought this project to the city at the work, at the pre-application meeting, the whole intent behind this is to provide a product conducive to workforce housing and the people that would be working in the industrial center and alone, even Airport Road. And that's what we set out to do with this particular product. And I looked at the density, and I'll be happy to answer your questions. And in the vicinity, of course, we have R-15, we have an R-15 PUD, PRD, just down Highway 25. A short piece, and even though we're asking for R-6, that was mainly to accommodate the townhome element. The density that we're currently proposing, and Jillian or anybody on planning can jump in to correct me, but it's somewhere around 4.6 units per acre, four and a half units an acre.
That sounds correct, Andy.
And what would be allowable in R-15 would be three and a half. So we are asking for a little bit over what an R-15 would allow for, but certainly not what R-6 would allow for. Again, the R-6 was just to accommodate the townhome element. And I'll be happy to answer any of your other questions or concerns if I can.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from members of the commission for either the applicant or staff? So I'll lead off with a question. The townhomes, I can't read, I can't read the numbers on those, but the townhomes that are closest to the property line, how close are they relative to how close they were on the first plan? What's the difference?
Okay, so what we are waiting on right now, Chairman Perrier, is the railroad. I spoke to Mr. Philip Kelly about a week ago, and he sent off the application with the fee to the railroad, to CSX. So he expects the right-of-way to be quick claimed to us anytime. So we will have 33 feet of railroad right-of-way that we are not intending to encroach upon just as soon as we get that. So that if you consider the railroad right-of-way, the closest building will be approximately 58 to 60 feet from the future property line. And then, of course, if anything else develops in the IR, even up against the existing R-15 zoning, they would have to maintain a 50-foot right-of-way, or excuse me, a 50-foot landscape buffer. So right now, the closest any building would be to anything that can be built in the industrial center would be over 100 feet.
So Andy, if I understand correctly, right now, without the, I mean, let's just assume for a minute that the railroad right-of-way is not beaded over to you, and I'm sure it will be, but right now, you're 25 feet from the property line. Is that correct?
Yes, the closest building would be 25 feet from the property line as it currently sits.
Okay. I got a question for you, Andy. If you don't get the railway, railroad right-of-way, how does that affect if the 50-foot buffer yard? Maybe more of a question for planning, you know, for an industrial park. Does that allow a building in the industrial park to be built closer to the townhomes?
No, the industrial center would still have to honor their 50-foot buffer yard on their side unless Planning Commission granted a variance.
Okay, so whether you get it or not, does the building still stay 100 feet apart, and the 50-foot buffer would still be on the other side of the railroad right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay.
I will also say that railroad right-of-way, we need to get that figured out because that would make this property contiguous with the city limits. Without some portion of that railroad right-of-way, it's not contiguous, and so we'd have to, that might involve the county. And I think we'd like to avoid that just because that dramatically extends the timeline. So that railroad right-of-way, we, has to be, further documentation needs to be provided.
And I would second that, Ms. Jillian. We don't want to get into an interlocal agreement either.
Exactly, yes.
If that mean, so if we don't have the railroad right-of-way secured by the time of Planning Commission meeting, then you all can decide how you would want to proceed at that. I'm not really going to argue one way or the other.
Andy?
Yes.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yeah, please, go ahead, Councilman Fennell.
Andy, are these units right here, they all going to be for sale? Is there going to be rentals in this?
Well, of course, you know, we can't prevent anybody from buying it and renting it, but the intent is to market these as townhomes and to build them as such, not condos, but townhomes.
Have we had any studies done on the traffic impact for this year?
Yes, sir, we have some, we have a traffic impact study that just got completed. I believe we turned that into engineering, but they can correct me if I'm wrong.
This is Brian with Engineering. I haven't seen that yet, but we'll look for it.
We do have it, like I said, it just got completed, and we can get that turned in to them before the next, before, they have time to review before the Planning Commission meeting.
Understood.
Mr. Wilson, do you have any comments?
No comment.
I would just, at a glance.
The traffic study did recommend improvements on Highway 25. So it recommended turning lanes.
This obviously will come, this will have a public hearing in a couple of weeks. I mean, it's a rezoning, so staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but this will come with a public hearing, won't it?
You did have one at the last meeting, but you are welcome to open it up again.
Right, I think we probably will open it up for public comment to make sure everybody has a chance to speak. My concern at a glance is I'm looking at the lots to the east. They're pretty large lots, those are kind of pie-shaped cul-de-sac lots. I don't know what size they are, but they look to be, well, they look to be at least over a half-acre lot. And then the lots across the street to the west are large lots, and the ones, or I'm sorry, to the south, and the ones to the west are large lots. I just want to make sure that we're not spot zoning some high-density in here just because we could fit as many houses in there. Under the R-15, it would be, if I understood the applicant right, we could allow 3.5 units per acre. And what the request is 4.5. I'm just still a little concerned about the density. But with that, I'll be, I'll stop talking and leave it for comments from other members of the commission.
Mr. Chairman, we have a staff representative with the Galton EDA who'd like to speak on this issue as a member of staff. James O'Rossmere, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm supportive of what's going on here, given the, you know, the rearrangement of the multifamily buildings that are out there. They have addressed the noise concerns that I had brought up earlier. One of the things that I'm hopeful that this will be is actually workforce housing. And I think that's what this is all about. Galton has not been hit as hard as most communities by the pandemic here. We continue to grow. We have several industrial announcements and some other technology announcements coming up closely. But that just really makes an important comment on the, for housing. And as long as this will be affordable, I'm excited about it, actually.
Okay, thank you, James. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
Question for applicant Andy. What, do you know a price point, the houses and what they're, what they're trying to hit?
So at the current density, we're hopeful to keep it in the 250 range. And you guys are, you know, some of you do some developments yourself, and you know how this works. A mile of road, a mile of water, a mile of sewer, it all costs the same. So when we can stretch that cost amongst 200 units as opposed to 150, then we can keep it at that price point much easier.
Do we have any other questions?
And Mr. Chairman, I will state that we will provide information on the lot sizes that abut this property to the east so that you'll have a better understanding of the size of those lots that are already located to the east and zoned R-15. They may be larger than minimum lot sizes in the R-15 zone, but we'll provide that information at the next meeting.
Mr. McCord, does this require a vote to change the community character map?
No, it's zoned, or it's identified as for land use for residential.
Suburban established.
Suburban established, so it already complies with that for residential use.
And suburban established includes an R-6 zoning?
It is just residential. It doesn't specify. Now, R-6 would be one of the zoning classifications that would fit into suburban residential.
I understand what you're trying to, Andy, I'm not trying to make it too hard on you. Or I'm just raising objections. I just want to be mindful of the concerns of the community out there because it definitely is different from the surrounding community. But we'll, I think, is there any other?
You know, and I can, you know, sympathize with the concerns. I'll tell you right now, I'm looking at the GIS. Let's make these Zoom meetings a little bit more conducive to sitting here with my computer up. GIS is correct. I mean, they're 20,000 square foot lots to the east, you know, zoned R-15. So I don't know how they got that R-15 designation, but, you know, we're not trying to hide anything from anyone here. We do feel like that this product nestled between those 20,000 square foot lots and the industrial center is a little more appropriate tucked away back there than maybe it would be in a different setting. And we have set aside the larger lots up against that eastern boundary with the buffer area and open space. And so we tried to keep what's, you know, the denser up against the railroad, up against the IR, to soften that from the existing residential. So we tried to consider, you know, what was there when we, when we laid this out.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, the suburban neighborhood established, which is the character area that's designated on this property, identifies various zoning districts which are certainly appropriate. And they range from R-10, R-15, R-20, R-40, and MRO. Now, MRO is not much different, pretty similar to what they have here. As a matter of fact, I think the applicant was originally proposing MRO, and we geared him more to the planned residential development. But the approximate density range is from two to five units per acre. So it's still within that limit of two to five units per acre, and it would be up on the upper range of that, but still within that area. As long as it's below five units an acre, five units or less per acre, it's probably could be considered consistent. So that, that material will be provided in your agenda package, I think it was last time, that describes the intent of the suburban neighborhood established character.
All right, very good. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, James Fenton again. The access to 25, there are several developments occurring out that way. And 25 right now is the state route, obviously will remain a state route. But there are several access, you know, concerns that we have to address at this point in time. And I'm not sure how to address what this development is requesting. I'm supportive of it, but we just need to keep in mind moving forward that as things develop, and this is the way the development is moving, we have to worry about access to 25.
That's what the staff is for.
Okay. Okay. And just since we're recording this, let the record show that Dr. Rick Orgain has joined us. Thank you, Rick.
Good work.
Any other comments? Saying none, we'll move on to the next item. Item number three.
Yes, this is a preliminary plat for the paddock at Kennesaw Farms. This includes phases 1A, 2A, 3A, and 4A, which is directly adjacent to Kennesaw Farms and will be accessed from Kennesaw Boulevard. Next slide, please. This includes the area that recently had an FMDP approved for it. So the plan is consistent with that FMDP, pending some minor corrections throughout with labeling and some clarification on the alleys that go through this development. But it is for 130 units, which is what was approved with the FMDP, and is consistent with previous plans for this area. And I believe the applicant is here. Yes.
Scott Foster, your line's been unmuted.
I'm here.
Go ahead, Scott.
This is to carry on what we did in the back of Kennesaw Farms. We've got villa product, our courtyard product, and 50-foot wide single-family detached. About 130 units total.
Do, does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions. This looks, you know, it's consistent, and it looks like a good product.
Consistent with, yeah, it's consistent with just a phase of what they've been working on. Any other questions at all? Well, saying none, then we'll see this back in a couple of weeks. Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item number four is Bella Vista rezoning with Preliminary Master Development Plan. Dustin, you're handling that one?
Yes, sir. This is to rezone 13.76 acres from the A zoning to the R-15 PRD, zoning with the PMDP for Bella Vista. It's located south of East Broadway and near Martin Lane, east of Airport Road. It's for 32 single-family lots, five open space tracks, and one right-of-way. Actually, about 15 years ago, this property had a BZA approval to be a driving range, but the site plan was rejected by Planning Commission. And then that approval for the driving range did expire. Issues we're having with this one, there are some issues with the buffer yards that need to be changed that weren't correct. Also, engineering's identified there, those circles on your screen are places for stubouts to future development, and also to minimize cuts on US 31 there. There's some issues about how the stormwater on the front lots is going to be treated. The open space areas are where the stormwater will be, stormwater maintenance infrastructure will be, so there's, engineering has some questions about how these lots will be treated. We also need some access to the open space tracks, probably through some, some open space tracks that run from the larger areas to the right-of-way for access. And also, we need more open space generally. We need about an acre more of open space to meet the 20% requirement of R-15 PRD. But there's also flexibility that the applicant has with lot size and setbacks in order to meet that. PUDs along the lot lines, something we need, and then also some traffic calming on the right-of-way. But those are our only issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Do we have a representative for the applicant present? Andy?
I'm here, and everything Dustin hit on, you know, this is a little bit unique in the fact that these clients are actually wanting the larger R-15 lots. And the shape of the property is conducive to meeting the open space requirement because the lots are so deep. And in general, I have no disagreement with anything that Dustin brought up. As a matter of fact, we've already made those adjustments in the plans. I would like some freedom to discuss stubbing out a 50-foot right-of-way to a two-and-a-half-acre track to the east. I completely understand stubbing out to the 100-plus-acre track in the rear, but I feel like we're being asked to give somebody a really expensive driveway for that two-and-a-half acres to the east. Other than that, we're in full agreement with the comments.
So I remember this property well. This was the driving range where they would have had to have porta toilets. And the reason I remember it well is that there was an issue with the access, I guess that's 25 or is it 31, there was issue with access onto the main road, and I don't remember what it was. Can engineering chime in on that? Does it have to line up with the road across the street or something?
I was confused about your question, Mr. Chairman. Are you talking about?
When this was, when this came before, it says the driving range property. I remember that we had a long discussion about the road access onto the main road. I don't remember if it was a matter of lining up with the street across from it, or if it was something. But do you have any issues with the access point?
No, we're good. The city engineer and I went out and checked the site distance each direction, east and west of this. We've got over 800 feet to the northeast and 700 feet to the southwest. The posted speed limit out there is 45 miles an hour, so them cutting into the side of this bank to go ahead and build the road out to East Broadway works for us.
Oh, that's what it was. I remember it now. That was, they didn't want to do that, cutting into that bank. Their access point years ago was a little bit wonkier. Okay, well, any other, I like the look of it. You've got 15,000 square foot lots. The only concern is just one way in, one way out, and so any other questions or comments from members of the commission?
I think there was an issue with the sewer too, wasn't it?
It was then.
It's, it's still going to be a point of contention, to say the least. Public sewer is not far away, but the topography is going to be challenging.
Oh, you're saying this won't have sewer?
No, I'm not saying that. It's going to have to have sewer. It's just not going to be on them to get it there, but they're going to have to do it.
Okay.
I've got a question for, for engineering. The, the access stub out to the two-acre, two-and-a-half-acre track up closer to, to 31, is the goal of that to, to avoid another connection to 31 from that track in the future? Is that why you guys are asking for that?
Yeah, I believe right now that, that we'll just call that parcel 42 stub out for clarity. That, I believe the city engineer would like to make a connection there because we feel like that could be the next potential development out here in this area. And that would eliminate another connection to 31E.
I mean. But that tracks, it is just two, two-and-a-half acres, right? It's not, so even if it was developed, it wouldn't be. It's not, so even if it was developed, it wouldn't be a lot of traffic, would it? Unless it's combined with something else?
Well, it depends on the density, but yeah, that would be a fair statement. It, it's quite possible that, that the, the other property around that as well could develop too. So I think that's kind of the way that we were looking at that, just not the two acres. But what's east of that is, is some additional acreage as well. Probably about another 10 acres, maybe.
Okay. Yeah, I think the, the access point on the rear of the property, I think that, that does make more sense. I mean, I'm not saying it's not useful, but it does seem like a lot to ask for. And all that cost of that, to put it in, not, not the, you know, I know we're not supposed to look at cost, but. Anyway, all right, well, we can look at that when it comes back.
And, and if the applicant wants to get with engineering, then we can, you know, we can try to work that out between the next time we meet.
We can.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions? Saying none, we'll see this back in a couple of weeks then. We'll move on to item number five, which is, nope. Okay, so item number five is the same property, Bella Vista Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Yeah, this, this is just to, the reason this, this parcel was split on its character area was it was annexed in, well, so the plan, Galsen Old Move was done in 2009. And at that time, the city limits ran across the middle of the property. The rest of the property was annexed in 2011. And so at that time, at the original time with the character areas, when it was split because of the city limits line. So this basically just takes that southern portion and gives it the same character area, which probably should have been done originally anyways, and also makes possible the Bella Vista PMDP. So.
Andy, do you, the applicant's representative, do you have anything to add to this?
No, sir. We understand this is probably needed to clean up some things that, you know, had the city limits been different years ago, they might have had a different character on top of it.
That seems pretty procedural to me. Does anyone have any questions? Saying none, then we'll see this item four and five back in a couple of weeks. We'll move on to item number six, which is Montgomery Office of Final Master Development Plan. Jillian?
Yes, so this is the final master development plan for the Montgomery office. This is one of the residential homes that is on Nashville Pike, in the Nashville Pike corridor. The PMDP, the rezoning with the PMDP was approved by city council last month. And so this is just the final master development plan. Next page, please. So with some minor corrections, this will be consistent with the approved PMDP. Primary changes will be adding the parking sidewalk and removing the driveway access to Nashville Pike. So instead, the access will be from a neighboring property, which is consistent with the corridor plan. And the applicant is here.
Andy, can I assume you're the applicant's representative?
It's a correct assumption. We're in agreement with everything. I wasn't trying to create unnecessary work for Ms. Jillian. We probably turned in the wrong version originally for the FMDP. So I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Just trying to keep you on your toes.
So Andy, will you object if we add a condition to staff's comments to add an eight-foot privacy fence on the back of the property? Never mind, I'm kidding.
Ah, well, yeah, okay. I'm not, I'm not going to object, but that doesn't mean that the owners might not.
Be a freebie. Any questions or comments? I don't see any. It looks straightforward. Matt, did you have any comments?
I, no, I don't, I don't have any comments on it. It's, I looked over this earlier today. It looks good.
Councilman Snell, anyone else?
Good.
Yeah, I think it looks like a good, good project. Light out really well. And no curb cut to Nashville Pike, that's impressive.
No. They knew that when they first talked to me about purchasing the property.
Very good. Well, seeing none, then we'll see this back in a couple of weeks. We'll move on to item number seven. Sumner County Administrative Building Parking Area Final Master Development Plan. Sharon Burton, you handling that one?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, this is a parking addition for the county administration building. It's out on Belvedere Drive, well, on Tulip Poplar Drive. It's, they bought part of the property that's back behind there. And the only reason it's not just a site plan is because it was zoned, it is zoned MRO. So that requires final master development plan. They're going to put in 77 parking spaces. Think all the engineering things got worked out? Is that right, Brian?
I believe so. I hadn't seen recent metals yet, but.
Okay. So it's pretty simple and straightforward here.
It's just behind the document building that was split up?
Yes, behind the archives building, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Do we have a representative for the applicant here?
Oh, Richard Jones was going to try to get on tonight. I haven't seen him up here anywhere.
Richard, your line's been unmuted. Richard, your line's been unmuted.
Is he the telephone one?
Are you guys? Are you guys hearing me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes.
Okay, maybe feedback too. I don't know what you're hearing me on. So it's a simple parking place. We're overloaded. And I'm sure the employees will get to park there, but it's basically parking, lighting, landscape, and a type 2 bio-retention area.
Questions from the commission?
I don't have anything. This looks pretty straightforward and looks like engineering in the county have worked everything out well.
Yep. It looks, looks fine. If there's no other questions, we'll move on. We'll see this back in a couple of weeks. I don't see any problems with it. We'll see.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you.
Item number eight is Fairview Resubdivision of Lots 51 through 54. And Sharon, are you handling this one?
Yes, I've got this one. It's, these are residential lots. They've been, they're, this is phase one of Fairview, so that's, they've been around a while. Actually, it's the property owners, one of the property owners is here. I know I saw him on our list. Don't know if Mr. Crenshaw is here. But what they have done, there were four lots, and they're wanting to divide them up and just take the one lot that's in the middle and divide it among the three properties and make it three, three lots. There's on the MRO too, that's why it came, had to come too.
Is, is one of the representatives, is it Dennis Cavan?
Yes.
Dennis, are you on the line?
I am, sir.
Is this, is this between your house, you and Danny Guy, and your barbecue neighbor? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we, what we'd like to do is just split the lot straight down the middle. I'll keep my half of it. Danny will get a quarter of it, and Mike Isaacson will get the other quarter. Danny's old house has no yard whatsoever, and Mike's got two young kids and some dogs. And so I was willing to help him out.
Yeah.
And the HOA, HOA has approved it, by the way.
So if I understand properly, we're reducing density and not building anything on it. If we can end on this item and just go out on a high note, we'll call it a meeting.
There you go.
This is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Bill McCourt, we're, there is a master plan that's associated with this development. And we are wanting to check to make sure that the proposal is consistent with the master plan. This might be a finding that y'all would make. If you agree that it is a not insignificant, that it does not require an amendment to the master plan, then we can just handle it as a resubdivision and not deal with the master plan amendment. But we would want y'all to make that decision. And usually when there's a lot, a decrease in the number of lots, that's really not a concern at all. But I would like for y'all to make that as a finding, as a, if you want to, as part of this replat, that it would be not be required. It's usually when there's an uptick in the number of lots that we have a, we certainly will have an issue of increasing density when they're creating an additional lot as opposed to reducing one. So we will address that in the resolution. That might be something you want to speak on now or even have the applicant speak on. I, I have, I can't, I didn't review this one myself, so I'm not sure exactly what lot configuration was described in the original preliminary master development plan and final master plan. But either way, it looks like a lot reduction, so it's not, shouldn't be a big issue.
Well, I'm only familiar with the terms major amendment or major change to a final master development plan and minor change, but this seems to be a third term, which is insignificant change. So I don't know that we can take a vote tonight, but I can tell you, my opinion is this is something the staff can work through and just have a, something for us to vote and approve. I'm in favor of not having to go through the change to the development plan process.
I agree with you. I agree with you on that.
This is, this is insignificant and minor, and then, you know, there's no need to go through that whole process.
So I think that gives you the direction you need, Bill?
Okay. We'll incorporate that into the resolution.
Okay, well, then we'll move on to, I think it's item number nine.
Thank you, General.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thanks, guys. Appreciate the help.
Oh, we really are going out on a high note. Okay.
Well, I do have one little minor thing I want to mention. The, and this really, I don't think, requires approval of the planning commission. We had a street that was platted in the Meadow Lynn at Fairway Farms subdivision. That's the one, phase four, if you will, of Fairway Farms. And one of the phases, the street was titled Nickel Drive. And another phase that essentially extends that street was, was titled Bristol Drive. So obviously, you can see the confusion that would be created if you're traveling down a street and it just changes in mid-block from one name to another. So we are gonna, we're moving to change the street name from Nickel Drive to Bristol Drive so that the contiguous street and continuous street has one name. So we may actually have a resolution asking your support for that, to amend the plat to change the name of that street.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds like a smart plan. And also, I like the fact that you're dropping the Nichols and just changing it to Bristol because we've got Nichols Lane already. I would think that would be confusing to.
It is. This is spelled like the coin, spelled like the coin.
That was Nick, that was 911 suggestion.
Ah, okay.
But they're homonyms, I guess they're differently, but they're. So that will, it'll become, become Bristol Drive or Bristol Lane.
Do we have any other, other business to address? Well, if none, I just want to take this opportunity. We never see each other in person. I just want to take this opportunity to say congratulations to Dustin. I understand that he got married and went on a honeymoon here in the last month or two. Congrats.
Congratulations, Dustin.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Did you social distance on the honeymoon? Never mind, don't answer that.
You should have talked to us first.
Yeah, he's not, hey, don't turn me in, all right?
All right. Thank you very much, Bill. Do you have anything else or can we adjourn?
No, sir. I will give you an update on the architectural advisory committee. Or Matt, you could do that, I suppose, if you'd rather.
I, I didn't prepare anything, but glad to.
Okay. Well, they, they pretty much come up with a, and they haven't taken a final vote, so I'm not going to spring it on you, but they have come up with, after several meetings, they've come up with a recommendation, and they will be working through that. They still have a couple of weeks of additional review, but I think they've pretty much come up with a suggestion. And they will vote on that on the 30th of this month, the last, last Thursday of the month. And then we will bring that back to the planning commission, probably in, oh, maybe as early as August to address that. So that's the only additional information I have at this time.
Okay.
Well, I guess I could add one thing now that we're talking about it. I want to let you know that the county had adopted a new zoning resolution. So the result of that is that count, as part of that resolution, the county has overtaken zoning responsibilities in our planning region. Now, we still have subdivision responsibility in the planning region and possibly some other controls that retain, that we retain. And we're going to be meeting with the county staff here pretty soon and discussing what role that the city will take in continuing to review and enforce our zoning regulations and/or subdivision regulations inside the planning region. As a result of the county's action, many properties that are in the planning region now are non-conforming. So we'll be looking at a strategy, perhaps, that the county can pursue to overcome that. Those people still have the right to develop their properties under the vested zoning that they have, where applicable. So that's going to create a little confusion. Is, after we have our meeting, I'll give you an update, perhaps, at the next planning commission meeting to let you know what we've talked about and where we would move from there. It also means that the regional zoning board of appeals may no longer be needed. And depending on what the city decides to do, it may even change or reconstitute the regional municipal planning commission. Municipal regional planning commission is only a municipal planning commission. And that happened over in Mariville not too long ago, so we may follow that same path. You'd still have a comp plan authority in the, in the planning region as well as in the urban growth boundary. And so we'll be trying to essentially summarize what authorities are prevalent in various jurisdictions.
Would you also confirm, would you kind of clarify if someone is in the, if they're outside the city limit, but they're within the planning region? It's been unclear to me in the past whether they need to pull a building permit through the city or through the county. I was unclear, but on the past, I'm even more unclear, but now that the county is assuming those planning duties in our planning region.
Yeah, right now, those would still, and that's one of the reasons for the meeting, is that we would have the building department, because the city has an ordinance. And we'll need to discuss the validity of that ordinance now, given the county's action. But the city has an ordinance that they apply building permits in the planning region. So that's going to be one of the items we bring to you and let you know about.
That's a big one.
Yeah. Yeah, enforcement as well.
Seeing as how I just bought a piece of property to the planning region, but outside of the city, I probably need to ask that question myself this week. Because I'm, you're going to pull a building permit on something that the county, where the county's saying to pull it through them, but haven't checked with the city yet.
Yeah. There's a whole bunch of development provisions.
Well, I, I, my, my property might be the, the test case to figure out who actually has, who the permit's going to come through.
Well, if there's no other business, we will adjourn. Well, if there's no other business, we will adjourn and wish you all a good evening.
Guys, stay safe. Bye.
Good, thank you.
Bye.